And I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So.
It's our second.
Second.
All those in favor responding to saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same signal. We now have monthly department head meetings, so I will start with Kelly from the director's office. We have a guest here from the government class, so from the high school government class.
Well, I was caught up a little, caught a little off guard this morning. Ana has been selected for the jury trial, so she's been out of the office all week. She says, hey, you need to go down to board supervisor's meeting. Okay. So, what I've been sitting here trying to think of what to tell you guys. We will be mailing, delinquency property tax notices today. So, if there's any delinquencies, those are going out today. And we're still pushing real ID's hard in our office. It makes it difficult, but we're pushing them. About it.
Okay. What's the extra expense?
It's not more money. Well, it is if you can't find your documents. But, but it's, yeah, it's people, you know, people born nineteen thirty and they can't find their birth certificate. Have to get a replacement. Well, you can only get certain years through the recorder, so then they have to go through the state. So, it does create hassle when you do a lot of pushback on it, but you don't have to get one. You don't have to do it.
No, but we've mentioned before, if you want to go to Herbert Hoover Library, et cetera, you may not get in.
They should have a full star on your license, yeah.
I was state training a week, a couple weeks ago.
I didn't go, Ana did.
Okay.
Yeah, so I know she came back from a bunch of stuff. I don't think she's caught up yet either.
Okay, thank you. Roger?
Veterans affairs. Basically, business as usual. We had twenty two phone calls and fifty eight visits to file with about fourteen claims this last month, which is up considerably from what we normally do. And most of those are first time medical benefits at Iowa City Medical Center. And then several, I think about four of those were for disabilities that we filed claims for. This last month, we had our fall school in Des Moines, which included the commissioners. It was a very good school, I thought, anyway, in the last few days, although the first day for the commissioners, I thought they could have had a little bit better presentation for the commissioners, because our commissioners, our county commissioners, want to be actively involved in claimings, claims, and how they're actually presented and what the VSO actually goes through whenever they do file a claim. And that wasn't presented very well on the first day, and that's all they were required to be there. But the following day, they did have some good case scenarios that I thought it would be beneficial for the commission to see, or to listen to, anyway. Also, November third, at two thirty, is our Veterans Appreciation Day at Iowa City Kinnick Stadium, which we will be attending. It is an all-day affair, and we will be there with a booth as well. And it is a large attended function for veterans. It includes a lot of people, not only from Iowa, from Illinois, and some out-of-state folks. So, we'll get a chance to do present there for that. We also have a speaking engagement coming up the seventh of November at the Rotary Club at the college for their luncheon. And we'll be there with all of our commissioners there. We were just as busy this last month as we were in previous months, even though we was gone for about four days. And that's a, that's a good thing. The word's getting out is that they need to come and see us, and it's working well that way. And it's been working that well for several, almost all year, actually, so it's been a good thing. Charles, he attended his first, our new commissioner, to make mention of Charles Libby. He attended his first commissioners' meeting that we had, the week that he was appointed as a commissioner. And then he attended school in Des Moines, and he had a separate class for the first day of new commissioners and new BSOs. And it was a good class, according to him. And then he joined us at the latter part of the first day of the training in Des Moines. So, it was good there, and we did order his uniform, so he's all decked out in the same shirts as we are now. And that's pretty much what's going on at the VA. We'll be leaving here around noon on the third to go to the Kinnick Stadium, so we can get our booth set up, so. That's pretty much it.
All right, thank you.
I've been busy with hazardous mitigation work from the windstorm. I called the other day.
Do you want to say who you're with?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm with the emergency management. The windstorm that we had back August twenty eighth, they called me just last week, I believe it was, and said they're coming down to assess the damage from the state. And I said, well, come on down, but it's all cleaned up, you know? So, they drove around, I showed them some places that the trees went down, the stoplight. Went to the brush pile, took some pictures of the brush pile that is a third of what it was from the beginning. But anyway, and then they also included into the present, so was all the flooding and everything that we've had, which we really haven't had that much damage from flooding. But John and those guys from Conservation, they got logs and debris on the skunk that they're going to have to remove. And we met with secondary roads. And a lot of the mitigation work we've done in the past, which is a lot of the shireen of the roads, Jalen might be able to talk about this more, but a lot of the stuff that we've done to the roads and stuff, and then we've done to the campgrounds and stuff, has really limited the damage that we had this year. So, I think they've done like one load of rock to help re-rock a road that the water came up on and went back down on. And that was really all the damage that we've received from the flooding. So, the mitigation has worked in the past that we've done, so that's, that's a good thing, that's a positive thing. We did meet our threshold here in the county. Our threshold is seventy-eight thousand and change, and, or seventy-six thousand, excuse me, and change. And we had about a hundred and fifty-plus thousand dollars in damage, but the state did not meet their threshold. And our director says, oops, she looked at it wrong, the thing, she goes, we just missed the threshold. We had about four million dollars in damage, and we needed four point five million. So, I don't know how five hundred thousand is just missing it, but I guess in her world, that's not a lot of money. But in my world, it's a lot of money. But so, we are probably not going to get aid from it unless somebody turns in a huge bill somewhere in the state. So, that's, you know, wish we could have, I wish we could have got some aid to help out with those things. Went to a school training a couple weeks ago. The state has now mandated that all schools have a high-quality emergency plan. And so, most of our schools were represented there. It was a good training, it was all day over in Atumla, the EEA. We looked at plans, I'm meeting with the superintendents. The language in the law analysis, they have to include the emergency manager in their plans. We have to review them and make sure that we deem them as high-quality. They just don't define what high-quality is. So, it's our opinion, I guess, but we'll be working with that with the schools. Most of our schools have some good, good plans. So, we've been working on those for the last several years. And so, we did that. And then October ended up being, the nursing homes had to have their emergency plans done and tested. And so, I spent quite a bit of time with the nursing homes in the county and actually outside of the county, evaluating and participating in exercises with them, so they can get planned and get state aid as well. So, we'll be starting on the planning cycle for next year's. We're working on a county-wide plan, so that, planning, county-wide exercise, so that we don't have to do individual places, we can just do one at the same time and get credit for all of it, for the hospital and all the nursing homes, so try to streamline that a little bit. So, that's mainly what I've been working on.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm happy to report we've had a few dozen people take advantage of the homestead that we just had. They can sign up electronically, so that's taken off pretty well. Joanne does send out a letter when they're reminding them to sign up for homestead, that they can do it online, so that people are taking advantage of that. Field work is in full swing. Pete and I also attended our fall school for ISAA, October twenty first to the twenty first, or twenty fourth. There's a lot of good information, that always is, a lot of law updates that they update us on all the new stuff that's coming down the pipe. And we're currently researching for the company that will handle our assessment notices and mailings, because they now have passed a new law that we can send out assessment notices by email. If people elect to do that as well, so we're looking for a company that can manage that whole, whether it gets paper mailed or emailed. So, we've had a couple companies that we've talked to about doing that for us, so that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Ellen?
I'm with the Department, the engineer. In the nearest one. Let's be perfectly honest, you won't put that in there.
Is vacation?
Yep, well deserved. The big thing in our department recently has been signs. We've been doing the new street signs in Mount Union and the nine-one-one commission, is that what they're called?
Board.
Board, whatever. Approved funding for all new street signs in Mount Union because they were either not up or not.
Legible?
Yeah, lots of different things. So, we took all the old ones down, put all new ones up, and they are done now. And as we did the street signs, we also replaced them with stop signs that we did done. So, the city of Mount Union should be in good order.
Formerly.
The community of.
Community.
Yep. Also, sign-wise, starting Monday night, we will have a crew out, which is two people, in pickup. We're doing our sign reflectivity. We did half of it last fall, and we'll be finishing the other half this fall. When I say half, it's not half of the county, like up and down, it's like half overall. The first part, they did mostly the hard-surface roads. This time, it'll be more gravel roads. They'll be working every night from six to ten, probably for the next four weeks, is our goal to call them.
Do we have to do that every year?
Every other year, so we just didn't get it done this fall.
Same crew?
Yes, same crew. The maintenance crew's working on dirt work. We're still able to do that. And we're working on box culverts to get roads open for the year. We have a major letting in December for the railroad bridge on Franklin Avenue. And otherwise, we're starting construction plans for our spring projects. So, we're buying the rideaway and getting that going so that we can start a new cycle. This time of year, we think about snow or not, we try not to, but we're ready as far as salt. We always have a stockpile of two hundred ton in the shed. And then we request salt on an as-needed basis, but we can purchase up to five hundred ton as needed through the year, so. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
The engineer's estimates are.
I don't know, but we have to ask. We'll do that on Tuesday, I'll bring it to you.
Joe?
I'm with Planning Zoning G.I.S. Board of Adjustment just recently did approvals on three new cell towers in the county. One northeast, one northwest, and one southwest, well, more south, just east of Salem Stub. So, those are three hundred-foot guide towers, so we'll see those going up in the future. They've all been permitting, and they're ready to build that.
Brand-new ones or regular?
Yeah, they're brand-new, brand-new towers. This has got something to do with some kind of nine-one-one coverage, but they're going up by AT&T. So, we've seen those start to go up later late this year or coming up next year.
And along with that, all the existing ones are getting all new fiber optic lines coming in, because we're getting permits that'll be coming in to you, that the ones, they must be upgraded. So, we should have good coverage here in the county.
That's, that's why I asked that, because the one that is southeast of Salem right now, I've seen they, they were working out there. And that's why I wondered if they were taking it down, replacing it, or if we have another one.
This will be straight, straight east of the stub on the north side of Salem Road, maybe half, three-quarters of the mile.
That's probably also where the other one.
It has to do with first that.
There's one just south of Winfield, three-quarters mile south of the, of the seventy-eight turn. And then one south, about two miles southwest of Wayland, out of that pile of gravel roads.
Close to Trenton.
Hundred, no, hundred, hundred and twenty is three.
So, we're putting light weights in for those, so.
There's at least one new driveway going in, I think for the one.
And I think we're extending, so.
Right. Wayland area, the Wayland, what happened, the Wayland trailer park is now cleaned up. Trails are gone, the garbage is gone.
Cats are gone? Cats are.
I, I can't account for the cats. That their shelter and food is gone, they'll move, they'll move on, I don't know. But that's cleaned up, they're still looking for a new buyer. It's, it's possible the Board of Adjustment did approve that with new conditions for it to remain a trailer park. There's more work they'll have to do per that permit, some additional lighting, fixing the roads, things like that. They'll have to do, use it again. Of course, there's a lot of infrastructure that needs to be updated, but that'll be up to the new owner, if there is one. It's still for sale at this point. I've been helping the school districts. State Board asked them to update their boundaries for the census. They wanted us to verify all the school district boundaries, so I went through all those legal descriptions. Ours were all good within the county, I didn't have to adjust anything. Now, they were all coincided with the legal descriptions. So, I'm just, I'm sending back maps to the state and copies of legal descriptions, so they can send that to the Census Bureau. Ours currently matches the census, so they won't have to adjust anything within Henry County. We basically verified that. And helping the ambulance service on a mapping project they're working on too, like gathering data that they've, they've had before. That's everything I've got.
Okay, thank you. Shelley?
I'm the auditor in the Commission of Elections, and that's basically all that we have been doing for the last month is the elections. Absentee voting began on the eighth of October. Since that was Columbus Day, we could not mail out until the ninth. We are up to three thousand and thirty was what it was when I came down this morning, that had voted absentee and been mailed out. That is high. I think we will have a really good turnout. I don't know whether this means that there will be less at the polls or not. I, I really don't know. It's, it's hard to say, you can never predict in an election as to how things are going to turn out. But there seems to be a lot of interest. I know the people have been coming in, there's a lot more that I have never seen before that are coming in, so I don't know if they've never voted before, or if they've moved into the community and they're registered, but we haven't done a lot of voter registrations, because people are registered. I think they're getting it done when they do their license and that, or. But we had a satellite polling place on the twenty-fourth of October over at Iowa Westland Community College. It was petitioned of me to do that by the Democrat Party. I did, I have to do so when I petition. There were six voters. It cost the county approximately three hundred and fifty dollars to have that site for the six hours that it was open. So, that was roughly about fifty-eight dollars a, an individual that voted. One of those individuals was one of the workers. Three of them were other people that were in the precinct, and two were actually students at the college. So, I hope that they think about that in the future of having us do that and no more turnout than there was. One thing I want to be sure everybody knows, that if you voted early or voted absentee, it all being the same thing, your ballots will be counted. They are counted on Election Day, and the tally is done at nine o'clock when the polls close. There have been questions called in that are afraid that their ballots, they've received emails, they've received text messages, that their ballots are not going to be counted. To check and make sure that their ballot's there and they're not going to be counted. People have voted right in my office, seen us put it in the drawer, and they receive these, and they call in, they're concerned. Their ballot will be counted, they have always been counted, they're always a part of the total. They have nothing to fear. So, other than that, I mean, it's busy nonstop with the election stuff. It's hard to get all the rest of our work done this time.
Okay, thank you. Gary, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I got a couple little things here. Thinking back on that, okay, what's the benefit of the people who are trying to throw a wrench into this? You don't do something else with the benefit.
I don't know. I, I felt really bad yesterday. I had two elderly folks who come in and wanted to vote. Well, when I keyed their name into the computer to bring it up, they had already voted. Their ballots were back in my office even, I had to go pull them. But what is happening is people think we send out all of these cards that everyone gets in the mail. The auditor's office doesn't send anything out unless you call and request a re, an absentee ballot form from us. We don't mail anything out. These are mailed out by the parties and different groups that do this. Well, these folks have already voted, then they've gotten these cards in the mail telling them, and it's got my name on it, my office. So, they're thinking, I'm sending this to them, telling them they need to vote again. Well, she come in to vote, and she says, well, that was for the other election. No, ma'am, it was the same election. And she said, well, I got this card in the mail, and no, that didn't come from us. These cards are very confusing, especially to the older folks. And they had voted, their ballots were with us, they're very secure, but these cards, they get after they've already done this, and it confuses them, or they get these phone calls, you need to go vote. Well, they don't know that they already have. It's just, it's very frustrating that there's so much propaganda out there about this, and then people don't remember, or they get confused, and they don't understand that they're fine. You know, if they've come in and voted, or if they've mailed their ballot in, they want to check, call our office. We're happy to answer their questions. But I don't know why all of this has started. I mean, there's Facebook pages, there's, like I said, texts. I don't know how they get people's numbers and send to text them. This one lady called yesterday, she had received a text directly to her that her ballot wasn't going to be counted. She needed to call, and she called. No, we have your ballot, it will be counted. So, I mean, it, it's, I don't know why, what the purpose is behind it, I don't know.
Well, again, like I said, you don't create a massive effort unless you see some benefit from what you're doing. And I'm struggling to see any benefit that person would get out of throwing a wrench in it.
I don't see any. And the cards have always been an issue for us, they get mailed out, because a spouse may get one, but the other spouse doesn't. So, then, well, you sent one to my spouse, why didn't you send one to me? No, I'm sorry, we don't mail those out. Those come to you, you know, we'll be happy to mail you one if you want to request it of us, we'll send it to you. But we do not mail any of that stuff out massively, so.
Our trial runs till next Wednesday, is the estimate?
Yes, because I've had to get additional poll workers, or a different poll worker, because one of my poll workers is, was selected for jury also. So, and they were told, she told us that they were told that it's estimated the trial will run through Wednesday next week, so.
And then, has Brent been in touch with you on census? He's had something to do about census.
He had not, no.
Or Jack?
I know Jack, different census thing.
Yeah, I, I, of course, it's, you know, came to the census, you worked, if you, they needed something, they got it from you, you know.
Yeah, they have, and then.
Yeah, I haven't heard it lately.
Okay. Okay, Mark, do you have anything?
Yes, we signed a contract with Karoche again, and all will need training. We're asking for all department heads to assist us, and this reason being is if you have been trained and they're in the breach, we understand the penalty severity is lesser because of that. So, each department will have a, probably a different amount of training, some will have a low level, some will have higher level. So, just please help us out on that, that I know is not the most favorite thing, sort of to go through, sort of like M Shaw.
So, Sarah's still taking care of the.
Sarah will still be taking care of it, she will be charged up for it, so.
It would be done electronically like the.
Before.
She'll let us, would you call it?
It's, it's for your HIPAA.
It's for your HIPAA.
Karoche is the company that, Karoche, Karoche.
Hopefully, less bugs in the future than they have in the past.
Yes, and that, we, we talked to them about, they were saying that we didn't have a great participation, but we said, we, all, they didn't have a supervisor, they have an EBS, we've had it, so. It makes you a little bit wary, but. We've, we've had supervisors dealt, and talking to other county supervisors, some of them have even upgraded the level that they are having participation in with their HIPAA, thinking that it's getting more and more serious that we have to have it, so.
My suggestion to you is if you take the training, and it allows you to see the certificate that you've completed it, print it, so that you have it to say, oh, yes, but I did. I had that happen with my office, they said that some hadn't completed it, and we printed off our certificates and says, here's our certificate that says we did, so.
That'll be coming down. I don't, there was not a date actually set when we signed the contract, it's passed, Mark.
Okay, I have nothing to add, thank you.
Great, well. If the media will help me, people are bringing sharps out to emergency management, needles and stuff. And we do not take sharps at emergency management. Sanitation takes the sharps on Fridays and Saturday mornings. Do not bring them to emergency management to hang on my door after I'm gone. I, I don't want them, I, I, I don't want them, so.
Are these individuals or?
They're individuals. And what, when they talk to me, they say Hy-Vee tells them to bring them out there. So, I've talked to Hy-Vee, and they say, no, we tell them to bring them behind emergency management. And all they hear is bring them to emergency management, so if they, if you guys can put that out to help spread the word that I don't want them.
Can you capture them on camera?
No.
Okay.
No, so.
Don't they want a replacement container?
No, they bring them to me in Walmart sacks.
They don't have the container?
Well, they only have the appropriate.
They only have the appropriate container, they just hang them on Walmart sacks. Yeah, and then give the containers at sanitation, if they bring them on Fridays and Saturdays, they will give them a replacement container. But they bring them to Walmart sacks and hang them on my door.
Well, they're probably dumping them out of the container.
That's my guess.
I didn't get to take it open this time.
No way.
When there's a will, there's a way. So if you guys can help with that, I'd appreciate it.
I mean, yeah, and that's, and that's for the whole county, it's not just the little residents, anybody.
As long as you're not a business.
Anybody can bring sharps.
As long as you're not a business.
As long as you're not a business.
And one other thing I would like to reiterate so that the press may can help with this, all the residents who live in the city limits of Mount Pleasant will be voting at Veteran Hall at three-hundred West Monroe on Tuesday. And all of those who voted at the central precinct, which is the townships of Marion, Center, Tippy Canoe, and Trenton, will be voting out at emergency management in the west end of the building. And that will more than likely be the permanent location.
North. West.
West end of the other emergency management.
Oh, okay. More to be my office. I want them, I want them all in my office.
Okay, if there's nothing else. Free to go back to your duties. Thank you.
Yes.
Gary, do you have any?
I know, he's working on that project, but I don't know.
No.
Well, Park County DCAT, yesterday, we went over our expenditures for nineteen and our budget for nineteen approved, everything. We had some money that was not allocated, so we sent out RFDs and, not really an RFD, just anybody could present, it had to be under forty-five hundred dollars. And the ones that we had, we had, the last meeting already did some, but the ones that we have funded for right now are poverty simulation facility training, early childhood summit is to help work with childcare people. Young House needed some extra screening, training for what it's for, I don't underst, I don't know what the acronym is, but the people of DHS said it is the right thing for us to do. Also, since we are getting less and less money to DCAT, we're funding a grant writer for all providers to come in and get a training for a grant writing. And then we also are doing some scholarship for children exposed, exposed to violence, those who can, who are helping children and to prevent child use, abuse. And then also, we are going again, do a big training next spring with Frank Karoche, it has to help with law enforcement on, not law enforcement, but it has to do with poverty and helping children's IQs and things like that through, that have been traumatized, so that's what I'm looking for.
Thank you. I attended the Board of Health meeting on Tuesday, and we've had a presentation from Jack's Board, who is the planning and zoning for the city of Mount Pleasant, and he went over the duties that he is required to provide to the city. We talked about, I don't think it was residents, I'm not sure what it was, talked about bedbugs here in town and distinct odors, I guess, from animals inside the facility or inside the, I don't want to call it a residence, but. Structure, correct, okay. So we got public health, actually, the call came into public health first and they then contacted Jack, and Jack is taking action to try to get this cleaned up. It also was, my guess, an hour, the wall was next to a restaurant here in town, so. But he went over basically things that he's responsible for and actually the counties, the sanitarian was there, and that they could work together on, on things. Bruce also brought up about the pool, it actually will be shut down for a year at the hotel here. We gave us an update basically on the wall closures in the county and the number of units set for waste systems, septic systems in the county, Bruce updated this. We then had conversations in regards to healthy Henry County communities and the executive director, the board members there from healthy Henry County communities in the room of health and the county's HR individuals on a conference call, Paul Bruce, in regards to situation, I guess, that we're having with the executive directors paid by the county. We have another meeting scheduled for the twentieth of November at one o'clock to go through this with the Board of Supervisors, the Board of Health, and healthy Henry County communities. November one? November the twentieth at one o'clock. And that's, that's all I have. And we actually tabled the, because of Board of Health members having to leave or return to their jobs, we tabled the rest of the meeting, which was the statistical review from public health. It'll be tabled until the next meeting. That's all I have. Is there any other county that does this? I know, yeah, I know, I got it. I would entertain the motion.